I'm waiting for power here. Are we on? Are we alive?
Yeah.
There's nothing on the TV.
Don't you hear it? You don't hear yourself?
Well, let's see if they'll speak.
Please stand and say the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There we are. Okay, I see power now. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you.
We will start out our meeting. We've got an exemplary people. Peggy Diaz, and I understand that Mr. Cops is going to come up and do introduction for us.
So it's my pleasure to introduce Peggy Ann Diaz. Peggy's been a teacher with us since 2003 and has pretty much established our Culinary Arts program as we know it. It's been probably one of the most popular electives at Massey. Since she's been here, we have an in-house restaurant that's student-run every couple of weeks. She's done a number of community events. A lot of our kids leave Massey's culinary program and go into culinary arts in the future. Probably the two most reputable programs that kids can go to are the Culinary Institute of America in Hyde Park, New York, and Johnson &amp; Wales in Rhode Island. In order to gain admission into the CIA, the Culinary Institute of America, applicants need at least six months of experience working in a restaurant, which is tough for a lot of our kids to do. If Peggy Ann has worked with the Culinary Institute of America and students that take Culinary 1 and Culinary 2 at Massey are able to bypass that requirement when they go there. So that's pretty cool. The second piece, Peggy Ann has worked on an articulation agreement with Johnson &amp; Wales as well. And Johnson &amp; Wales did an analysis of our Culinary Arts program. They looked at our curriculum. They looked at lesson plans. They looked at our menus. The result of the articulation agreement was that any admitted applicant to Johnson &amp; Wales from Massey who maintained a grade of a B or better in their Culinary Arts class is given an opportunity to take a practical exam at Johnson &amp; Wales. The practical exam, according to Peggy Ann, is pretty easy for our kids because of the amount of the exposure that they get in her class. Success on that practical exam allows them to exempt out of nine credits at Johnson &amp; Wales. Specifically, they don't have to take Intro to Baking and Pastry, New World Cuisine, and Fundamentals of Food Service Production. The really nice part is that saves our kids about $10,000 to $12,000. So it's a couple of great pieces. So Peggy Ann Diaz.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you so much. I've actually been down, and Mr. Cops has given me a tour through your facility down there, and it's phenomenal what you've got. It's just beautiful.
It's really, I mean, we obviously couldn't do any of it without the facility, without the support of the administration and the board. Just the budget and the cleaning alone, you know, is just, is a lot, but, you know, it's great for the kids to learn how to do.
Well, not everyone is a computer whiz or, you know, an English major, and I think providing kids with an alternative such as the Culinary Arts is a wonderful thing to do. How many kids do you send through your program that actually go on to graduate?
At least one a year, and we've had years where there have been like five to seven. So right now, in culinary school, right now, there's a total of nine students between CIA, Johnson &amp; Wales, and Lincoln Tech that are Massey grads.
And we have, I mean, we were talking today about some of the kids and some of the places that they're working.
Yeah, I mean, one of our students is now sous chef at Eleven Madison Park, which is the restaurant in New York City. One was Unchopped. One is running the, all of the baking and pastry for a line of country clubs in Colorado. And then we have some who are just, you know, knock-around chefs who will go and work at Tavern and take somebody off and they go work at Pub 25 and just, you know, move around. But for some chefs, that's the life of, you know, of a cook. So we have the high end and just the plain old sloshing around working chef.
So we could go into New York and throw your name around and get a seat anywhere?
You probably actually could at Eleven Madison Park. You have to, it's Kendall Skudari. You have to know, know the student.
That's a farmer student.
Probably if you ask for Kendall, you could, you could get a seat.
Questions from the board?
Mark and John could probably tell you one of the funniest interview stories of all time was when Peggy Ann interviewed for the position at Massey. It was right during the renovation. It was before we started the, before we had the facility that we have now. And it was a pretty, I guess it was safe to say it was a pretty dilapidated facility because during her mock lesson with the students, one of the shelves crashed down and landed on a couple of kids.
Entire wall of cabinets fell down.
Yeah. So we had to send a kid to, for the nurse and, it was one for the bucks, one for the eight.
We hired her because she handled that.
Really, it could have been a dangerous situation. She handled it so well. She got the kid help. She brought him down to the, got the kid down to the nurse and then came back and finished the lesson.
I don't know what the protocol is, but everybody on this side of the room got in the nurse.
Always no blood and food.
Yeah, don't ruin the product. Never ruin the product.
And the flour tortillas, that they were delicious.
It was the 5th of May, and my late husband was, is Mexican, so we did salsa and tortillas of that.
I could tell you the catering job that your students did for the underage forum on drinking was phenomenal.
Oh, good.
And the kids, the kids were so professional in the presentation and how they were greeting people as they came up to the line and things. It was, it was a great event. Thank you.
And that's a nice piece with Semyon's Cafe is it's completely student-run, student-driven. Gives the kids to kind of, from, you know, waiting on the tables to preparing the food to clean, to clean up afterwards, to give them the whole overview of the whole business end of it, so.
Have they done some thorough receptions here as well?
Yeah, we do whatever you tell me to.
Thank you very much.
Lee?
I just wanted to say thank you, Peggy. This board and many boards previously have been the recipients of wonderful meals and snacks and tidbits and that sort of thing. And I, out in the community, I know a lot of kids that have really enjoyed learning to cook under your tutelage, that may not have ever really had that experience before. And it's been a great, a great part of their high school experience, so thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Lee, I don't know how exactly we would do this, but, you know, part of maybe is our communication website type or Facebook, having maybe a video of that area and talking about some of the things that they do. I mean, it's just a fabulous, silly program they've got over there.
I think it'd be neat to share some recipes and have, you know.
That's a great idea.
Have some of the kids, you know, share some of their favorite recipes.
Wonderful idea.
Okay, we'll get on that right now.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Christine, help me, honey.
John, are you taking a note?
I am.
You are?
It takes the community, you know, takes the village.
Well, I was thinking of our, your student, your student reps, your student communication people. Wonderful. We're moving on to item five. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some more.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. I will move on through the reports of our committees and liaisons, starting out with our Massey reps.
All righty. Well, to begin, and I'm sure as many of you guys have realized, as the parking lot was packed, tonight is the second night of parent-teacher conference nights for the second half of the alphabet. And then also, this Thursday is Career Day, and this year it's a little bit different because it's in the gym this year, and that's to accommodate more students and more different people from different professions. And that's really for anyone at high school that wants to get, that maybe doesn't know the path they want to go in or knows the path they want to go in and want to get more information about that. Normally, teachers will take their classes down, and it's really fun and really helpful and informational, and that will be just for the first few periods of the day, so.
And then next Monday is Engineering Day, which is like, for any kids who are interested in going to engineering, it's more like specific, like the different types to kind of learn about like the, all the different, which is helpful because, um, me personally, I know I want to go into engineering because I love my math and physics classes, but like, I'm not sure like which branch I want to go in. So then I know there's a lot of other kids in the same boat as me, so I think this will be really helpful for us.
So all sports are finished at Massey, all fall sports, and except for football. Football has their last game the night before Thanksgiving at Newtown. And the winter sports are starting soon, like indoor track and boys' swimming. And basketball actually has their tryouts next week. And everyone's sad that Mrs. O'Doy stepped down as coach, but they're actually very excited about the new coach from Laurelton. And the rest of the winter sports will start after Thanksgiving. Not much happening at Massey these next two weeks, but so much is. Next week.
Mike's comments about engineering remind me that December 6th, once again, will be hosting the robotics tournaments, one of the big tournaments. There'll be, I think, 50, 50 schools involved, plus a, an elementary exhibition on robotics, which I'm going to talk to the elementary principals about this Thursday, about trying to get some, some kids out here to see that. But that's a big event, and they're down in their workshop tonight building robots. It's, it's great to see.
Did you get any feedback for the play, or is anybody able to attend?
I went, I went, and I loved the play. I thought it was really great, and everyone seemed, who I heard that went, seemed to love it.
Even the in-school performance was really, was really good. I think they must have gotten a lot of people to go because of it. It was really good.
I attended Saturday evening, and I can tell you honestly that that has to be one of the top high school shows I have ever seen in all my 30-plus years in the business. I think it was exceptional. The costuming, the poise of the students, the sets. Amy, you were there, would you agree?
I was there. I was blown away by it, you know, and the kids in the band that played in the pit, they sounded professional. I mean, they, they were just really, filled out the entire experience. It was really wonderful.
Great stuff.
Thank you. Amy, CES?
Oh, I think you missed the ad hoc committee.
I wasn't going in order, but that's all right.
Oh, I'm happy to present first.
Go ahead.
Okay. I went to this ES meeting on November 4th. All of the board members will find at your place a pamphlet about the CES Foundation. I was asked to remind everybody about it. You know, like any educational foundation, the CES Foundation raises money to, you know, augment their operating budget. They are having a gala at the Regional School for the Arts, the RCA School, on December 4th, so they will have, you know, their students performing, and it's a great fundraiser for them, so it's on December 4th. Other highlights of the meeting were, they presented their yearly audit. You know, they get audited every year, just like any school district, and it was clean. They found no issues, so that was good news. CES also presented their calendar at the last meeting. You know, we're moving towards the regional school calendar, and even if we weren't, I know that Monroe Public Schools tends to start with the CES calendar for the R school calendar. And their calendar, just to give you the highlights, they start on August 28th, so, or no, I'm sorry. Students return for them on September 2nd next year. Their welcome back convocation is on the 28th. So I'm happy to share this with anyone on the board. I can scan it and email it out to the rest of the board if you're interested on the CES calendar for next year. One of the other things that was discussed at the meeting was they had an autism workshop by Temple Grandin, which if anybody knows anything about autism spectrum, she's one of the biggest names in autism, not research, I mean, she suffers from autism spectrum disorder. She has, you know, learned, gone to college, become a successful person. She works in animal, not husbandry, but she creates-
It was cattle, cattle herding.
Yes, she, she creates cattle slaughter devices, which sounds very strange, but-
Humane.
But actually, she has, you know, created a career for herself doing that, and so she presented to about 60 people a day-long workshop on autism at the Lear Center, and CES was a part of that. And then finally, the other thing that was highlighted was CES is offering a lot of professional development to local districts. I know we're taking part in their library professional development. There's also some STEM workshops that five districts in CES are participating in. We're one of them. It was very fun to sit at that meeting when they were, I had the, and I'm going to brag a little bit, I had the woman from Greenwich sitting next to me talking about how they were thinking about implementing STEM education in their schools, and they were looking for, you know, some models as to how to do it, and they'd heard about maybe there was a school up in West Hartford that was doing it, and the CES person looked right at me and said, "You should talk to the woman sitting next to you because Monroe's operated a STEM academy for several years at their middle school level." So that was kind of fun. So, so yeah, so they're doing several different professional developments that they highlighted, and one of them was on STEM education. So that was, that was the highlights, so that's it.
Thank you.
Just to piggyback a little bit on Amy's comments regarding the calendar, I went to the calendar committee meeting today down there, and it looks like we, we have a pretty good draft of the 1617 calendar, the year that the regional calendar becomes mandatory. That's due to the state by April 1st this year.
That's early. Great.
Board of Finance?
Yep. Finance committee met this evening. We discussed retirements and that we've heard that there will be several retirements in certified staff. We will discuss later on in the meeting, offering a retirement incentive to non-certified staff this year. We also talked about the budget. The budget is moving along and will be ready for December 1st presentation. And then finally, we discussed the turf field. Jim had somebody come in and look at the field down there and what it's going to take. And there's two phases to it. Phase one would be a feasibility study where we would get some good numbers on how much it would cost to do that, and we could go forth with after phase one to submit that to the town to get bonding. Phase two would be more the detailed work with the bid specifications and stuff like that, so we will again be discussing that later on in the meeting, too. And that's it.
Thank you. Jim, ad hoc?
Ad hoc committee met last Tuesday evening. We're making terrific progress now. Melan and McBroom came and had data to share with us. They're not completed yet, you know, but they were sharing what they were, how they were structuring it, and some of the preliminary data they shared with us. Great presentation. They could actually, they have software that'll actually take our three elementary districts and will predict enrollment trends within each, so that you get a much clearer picture of where the, the population trends are and things of that nature. So we're very pleased that we're moving right along. On Friday, we attended the CAE CAFS conference. Amy and Jeff were, were down for the day, as well as John Batista and I. It was a really, I think, one of the better CAE CAFS conventions that I've been to. The keynote speaker was a very well-known educational researcher, leader, Posi Strauberg, who wrote the book called Finnish Lessons and what, what the Finns have learned to become the highest-achieving country in the world on some of the standardized tests like PISA and TIMS. He said he learned it all from, they learned it all from American schools, which, you know, I'd like to get a copy of Finnish Lessons for all of the board members and some of our administrators to start having a, kind of a conversation around some of the great things that are happening in our schools that are not, you know, not noticed in the public and through the media. So we'll, we'll follow up with that. Thank you.
Jeff, Amy, any comments on the conference?
Well, as new board member, I was really eager and excited to go to the conference, and I was very glad I did. I went to five different workshops. Most of them were good. Several of them were great. The one takeaway I'd like to share with all of my fellow board members came at the FOI meeting where we discovered that any text you send or receive during a board meeting is a matter of public record, so be careful about texting during a board meeting. Just, I, that blew me away. John, John Batista was sitting next to me, and we both wrote in big letters on our notes, "No texting." I also went to the policy meeting. I also went to a workshop about the legalities of what you say as a board member, and I found that fascinating, you know, how you can actually get yourself in a whole lot of trouble if you're not very careful about what you say or how you say it, where you say it, how you say it. I also went to a budgeting meeting, and I got wonderful resources that I plan on sharing with Gabby about finance communication, and the presenter there was just very clear and concise, and I'm really eager to share what I learned there with Gabby, so I will be letting her know, so.
Great.
I attended three workshops. Two of them were great. One was just okay. One of them, the first one I attended was negotiations, and I have to say, after I came out of it, I saw Jim and John, and I told them how well they prepared me for negotiations through the four that I've been through already. So while I was in this workshop, it felt like it was just all repetitive for me because, you know, here I am, you know, listening to the workshop presenter, and he did a great job, and, but I'm like, oh, wow, yeah, I, I got that part already. I already knew this already, and like, oh, well, we used that during ours, and so it was good, and I was able to answer some questions and participate a little bit, which was nice. And then I took another one called Fix It Before It Breaks, where they talk about different types of scenarios and what happens, not just at Board of Ed meetings, but at town meetings, you know, with the Robert's Rules and different things, and that one was really good. And then the third one was called Synergy, and it was just really not good. Just the presenter was just not on key, and he didn't want to give out any handouts because he didn't want people to read while he was talking. So it got to the point where he was just like talking, and you didn't hear anything. So at that point, you know, we just kind of just said, okay, I had enough. But it was really good. It's great. I would definitely suggest it for new board members to go, like, like Amy gained so much out of it, and, you know, and it was really nice, and it was the magnitude of the amount of people there in the school system, just in Connecticut. And you think about, this is just all of Connecticut, it's just tremendous. I mean, there was 400, 500 people there. And it was nice to walk around with Jim and John, being introduced to people and seeing all the different superintendents and just different people that are there and, you know, talking to them and getting their variations of how their school runs, and it was, it was a good time, though. It was good, and I appreciate the, the suggestion of going from John, so thank you.
Great. Good. Thank you. Were there any other committee reports? Okay, and we will move on to public participation if there's anyone in the audience who cares to speak.
Hello, I've never done this before, so forgive me if I'm not doing it correctly. My name's Lou Capucci. I live at 673 Willa Road. I've been a homeowner in Monroe for 54 years now, and put three kids through your school system. And I'm ashamed to say it, but I'm 30 years late in coming here to thank you, okay? And you probably don't get many people come here to thank you for anything, so maybe I'm the first. I don't know. But let me tell you, my son is now 47. He graduated here, what's that, 30 years ago, I guess? Third in his class. He got accepted to Harvard, ended up with a degree in economics from Harvard and an MBA from Harvard. And I thank you guys, your predecessors, for that. I didn't send him to Choate. I didn't have to send him to Fairfield Prep. I didn't have to send him to the Gunnery. I sent him to Massey. Isn't that cool?
That's very cool.
Isn't it?
That's so cool.
I mean, and not only I'm proud, but you should all be proud, and certainly your predecessors, you know, and all, and the entire staff. My daughter, who, by the way, somebody mentioned Anne O'Doy?
Yeah.
She was on the same basketball team with Anne O'Doy. Is Anne O'Doy, O'Doy in her 40s?
Yes.
Okay. My daughter wanted to be a teacher, so she attended, graduated from Southern Connecticut, and for a few years was a teacher in the Haven area, now works part-time for, I think it's called the Department of Children and Families, where it's a one-on-one kind of thing that she does. And my youngest son, who's 35, I feel so old. Was interested in engineering and construction, got accepted at Purdue and got a degree in construction management. Again, thank you, the school system as a whole. And to this day, all of them, all three of them still talk about people like Anne O'Doy, the fellow who coached the girls' basketball team for years. I can't remember his name.
Mr. Strong.
Big, huh?
Mr. Strong.
Dave Strong.
Yeah. Ed Butler. Both my boys played football. Both of them-
We love Mr. Butler.
He's still here.
He's still here.
It's so cool. He lives 150 feet from a street that's named after him. Old Coach Road.
I'm going to tell him that the next time I see him.
Oh, I've told him that a few times. So, you know, and it's nice, they're still talking about Mr. G and, and all these, all these people. My, my family was in education. My father was assistant superintendent of music, assistant supervisor of music for the Bridgeport Board of Education. My mother was a homeroom teacher at Black Rock School. My sister was a principal at Fairfield Wood School. And by the way, she drove around with a bumper sticker that says, "If you think, if you think education is expensive, try ignorance." And my other sister was an art teacher at Shafford, and my daughter was a teacher in the Haven. And one time I thought I wanted to be a teacher, but that's a long story. So anyway, thank you, thank you, thank you. I have another story to tell you. A year ago, I had a, I had a problem. I had to see a heart doctor. So I found this guy who's associated, this doctor who's associated with Yale. His name is Joseph Brennan. And when I sat in his office, he started looking at my paperwork, and he says, "You're in Monroe?" I said, "Yes." He says, "I was raised in Monroe." He says, "I, I went through the Monroe School System." Really? And he spent the next 10 minutes talking about Enid Lepelus. Okay? I, I'm telling you, you couldn't pay somebody to say nicer things. She made him strive to do his utmost, and this guy's a heart doctor, okay? And I think she was a chemistry teacher, or is it-
42 years.
Yeah. And he asked me, "Do you know her?" And I said, "No, I've never met her, but I think my wife, until my wife blew out her knees, she used to play tennis with her." And I saw her at Town Hall about six months ago, and somebody said, "That's, that's Enid." So I went up and I introduced myself, and I said, "Do you know Joseph Brennan?" She goes, "Yes, he was a student of mine quite a while ago." She says, "How do you know him?" I says, "He's my heart doctor, and he speaks the world of you." And I tell you, the woman glowed, rightfully so, okay? And when I see things like that, I wish I had been a teacher. You know, I built buildings, you know? You, you build what's on the drawings, but you, you guys, you're building lives, you're building futures. And I'm indebted to all of you and all the past ones who did it. And I'm, I'm sure the service and the dedication is still there like it was for my kids, to the same degree, if not more. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Now, if I could just make one little complaint. I was absolutely stunned when I saw a picture of the kid marching in the parade in shorts. Memorial Day Parade, the band didn't wear their costumes. Are you serious? Am I wrong? It was in the Monroe Courier, and they said it was too hot. Too hot? Fourth of July is hot. Was it, it wasn't too hot for the, for the firemen to march that day in uniform, with ties, with hats? Why did the band wear shorts? I, well, oh, it was too hot. Well, wait a minute. Cold doesn't bother them. I, I go to the mailbox, I wear my, what do you call it, North Face Insulated Ski Jacket, a hat, okay? And as I get to the mailbox, the kid across the street says, "Hi, Mr. Capucci." And I look, and he's in shorts. And it's 20. This is all last winter. This kid goes to school in shorts every day. So if he's- So if he's that's tough, how come the kids in the band can't be tough in March, the last week of May? I don't get it. And I, and I guess you guys didn't know about it or had nothing to do with the choice. Is there a system that determines? I think it would be nicer if they just didn't march. I mean, how disrespectful could it be to not wear your uniforms to a parade? With that said, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming and speaking.
It was my pleasure and I'm sorry that I'm 30 years late. But I suppose, I hope you feel better late than ever.
Always.
Absolutely. You bring this real, I mean, this is the whole purpose of our education system, so we appreciate your comments, thank you very much.
And I also want you to know I'm the only guy in town who never voted against the budget.
Yeah.
Bless you.
I'm happy, I don't have a problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to item nine, no, eight, renew the October fund statement.
And I'll turn that over to Gabby.
So, as you notice, if you go to your insurance graph, it looks really kind of nice because we only had about $227,000 in medical claims. So that, you know, obviously says to us that our HSA is really working and it also means that we have relatively healthy employees and their family members. Because of that, when Jim and I met with Ovations, they, you know, they have a very positive outlook for our trend and for our medical reserves, so we're hoping that the year continues in this, in this trend and we're hoping that maybe, you know, we can have a good year next year as well. The flip side of that however, is utilities and I alluded to this during our Finance Committee meeting. Even though we've saved usage in electricity because of the Honeywell project, what that project did not do is it didn't insulate us from rising costs in electricity and as you're all aware, CLMP came out and asked for rate increases, as did UI. We aren't beholden to the CLMP and UI rate increases, however, we were on a fixed contract for electricity which expires this December, so with the contract renewal, we are impacted by the rising rates of electricity. We don't buy our energy from CLMP, we don't, we buy it from a separate broker, which kind of saves us a little bit, but our electricity prices are still going to go up about 30%. Natural gas prices are also going to go up, we're locking in, we've locked in the three schools, Fawn Hollow, sorry, two of the schools, Fawn Hollow and Jockey Hollow for natural gas prices. We're playing the float of the market, so we're gonna pay market prices for Massey and Monroe L, but what I've decided that we should do because oil prices have come down so much is we're going to actually put Massey onto oil for January and February. You know, based on the fact that we locked in oil prices at significantly less than the right, the increase in natural gas prices. And this is something that's impacting our budget, it's just, you know, I, we kind of have to play around and see if we're gonna stay on natural gas for next year, if we're gonna go to oil, or if we're gonna sort of kind of split the difference. I'm not an oil trader nor am I a fortune teller, so I really can't tell you what's going to happen, but I'm hoping that oil prices kind of continue to drop so that we might be able to go back to oil for a little bit at least. So that's the bad news.
Okay. Can I give you a question?
Sure.
I'm sure if I had long enough, I'd figure this out on my own, but since you're here, I thought I'd ask a question.
Okay.
I mean, we were, we were way down below what we were normally paying out in October and yet our balance, you know, went up just slightly.
Right. But don't forget, right, if you recall, when we started, two things, we now pay the employer portion of the medical balance, we don't pay a fixed cost every month like we used to. What we now do is because of the new healthcare regulations, we actually have to report the employer portion onto an employee's statement at the end of the year, so we have to run everything through payroll. So that's, so because we had the bulk of our employees not come back until late August and start getting payroll deductions, that's why you're seeing the medical account. It went down in July and August and it's slowly coming back up now that you have all 500 employees back being paid.
Whereas in the past, we would have made contributions.
Equally throughout the 12 months. So in the past, let's say we had, for example, budgeted $6 million for the medical account. We would take that $6 million and divide by 12 and pay $500,000 every single month. We don't do that anymore because we have to run the, how much we contribute to John's insurance and my insurance, it has to go through payroll. So for the teachers and for the paras and for the 10-month secretaries, the teachers are the bulk of our staff, when they came back in August, that's when we first started paying that, that's when we first started making a deduction. So you're gonna get 12 months of employer contributions smushed into 10 months for the teacher payroll.
Okay.
So by the time we get to June, it'll all be good.
So did they give you an idea as to what we anticipate ending up in June at? Or is it too soon to tell?
Based on our current runway, run, run rate, it should be a bit under $2 million, but it's well within the range that the board had set of 18 to 23% of projected total costs.
Okay, thank you. Any else, Jim?
No.
Okay, on to nine, we've got two presentations.
The first is part of the Board of Education Professional Development on grants this time, so sit back and enjoy, John will walk us through this.
Okay, so this is, this is, I think, our third in the series of professional development for the board and this one is about the grants and on the grants that we receive as a district. This year, we received $8,532,688 in grants. And some of those grants are formula grants, which means the state of Connecticut says Monroe gets this X amount of money based on federal grants. And some of them are grants that we apply for and we put money in and we get money that we applied for or a portion of the money that we applied for. So as we go through these grants, you'll see how some of them are state of Connecticut grants and some of them are federal grants funneled through the state, which is called a formula grant. The first grant that I want to talk about is the E-Rate Grant. And this is a federal grant and it provides funding for technology in our district and this is, the money that the federal government receives from this is the money that we pay that special tax in our phone bill. So you'll, you'll see that there is a tax in the phone bill for that and Monroe's share of that is $33,879 that we get every year for this E-grant, E-Rate. And it has to be used for technology. And Monroe uses it for funds for teacher and student devices. We're always looking to make sure we have enough student devices and again, teachers using smart boards, so we use that money for that, $33,000. The next grant is the IDEA grant. And, you know, IDEA grant is really the Individuals with Disability Education Act grant and the money goes for special education and it provides funds for our special ed costs. A portion of what we get, we have to use for special ed funding for non-public schools in our district, so we have to provide some special ed services for students that are in St. Jude. The amount of money that we got, that we're getting this year is $655,519. And that money is used, and you'll see it in the budget, to offset costs of staff and supplies and professional development. Some of the money has to be used for professional development. The next grant that we get is Title III Grant. And this grant is entitled English Language Acquisition and Enhancement Elementary and Secondary Act Grant. And really what it is, is it's a federal grant used to support students that are English language learners, students that we used to call ESL students. And Monroe uses that money for education supplies, teaching supplies in the classroom and for other teaching supplies for students with ELL. And we get $3,820 for that grant. The other grant is the Excess Cost Grant. That's not to be confused with the ECS Grant that goes to the town, that I'm gonna talk about, that big pot of money that Connecticut gives. This is the Special Education Excess Cost Grant. And this is reimbursed, this is money from the state that reimburses a district for costs of special ed, but they only reimburse for costs that are 4.5 times larger than what we pay per pupil's expenditure. So our per pupil expenditure is $15,000, 4.5% of that, times that is what they'll, if we go over that, that's what they'll pay. And as you all know, sometimes out placements or students' needs are well above that $15,000. So this year, the money that we're getting back is $604,022 and it's used just to offset the out-of-district placements, that's what we're using that for. Then we have the Magnet School Transportation Grant. And this is a grant from the state of Connecticut and it's written in the grant that they're gonna pay between 0 and 60% of the cost of transporting students to magnet schools. And we have 48 students who go to magnet schools. And there are five different magnet schools that we're responsible for transporting our students. The Trumbull AgroScience, so if a student from Monroe wants to go to Trumbull AgroScience, we have to pay for transportation for that. The Aquaculture School, they come to Massey in the morning, but we have to pay for them to travel that in the afternoon. Same thing with Regional Center for the Arts. Abbott Tech, students who go to Abbott Tech, we pay for transportation. And there's an Educational Center for the Arts in Stanford that we have a student that goes to and we have to pay for transportation for that. The percentage they give us comes out to about $16,000, doesn't nearly cover the cost, but it helps for that transportation and that's where that money goes. Then we have the Carl Perkins Grant. Now this grant's been around a real long time, because I remember when I first started this grant was here. And it's state of Connecticut money that we apply for and it has to be used for career vocational programs in the school. This year we're getting $22,246 and that's, money's really going to pay for supplies and hardware for Massey's career and technology education programs. So, paying the idea is, one year I got some money from Carl Perkins. The, you know, Bill McDonough went for some kind, for the robotics, that could be tech ed, you know, we, for the Channel 17, we have bought supplies and things like that for that. That's $22,000 for there, for the Carl Perkins. Then we have another title grant, it's called Title I. And this grant isn't, this grant is called Improving Basic Programs. And it's a grant to support students who are on free and reduced lunch. And the amount of money that Monroe gets from this state grant is $105,000. And we use this money to pay for a reading consultant. We use the money for materials and reading support for the classroom and also support for parents, for kids who may need that extra support around free and reduced lunch. Okay, so that's the Title I Grant. Every year we have to identify a school that's a Title I school based on the free and reduced lunch numbers in the school and that's where the money goes, $105,000 for that. There's another title, Title II. Title II Grant is a federal grant and it's, it's really to improve the quality and effectiveness of instruction in the schools. And we get $57,000 for this grant. We have to apply and do some paperwork and do some follow-up, get $57,000 and we use that money to pay for another reading consultant and part of the money has to go for professional development. And then there's a security grant. Now this is a one-time, all the other grants seem to happen every year. This is the one-time grant this year that was used for the security enhancements, the school districts had to pay for their security enhancements first and they'll cover a percentage. And, and if you remember, our percentage based on our ability to pay and Nerdurg and some demographic information, we get 37.5% reimbursement on those kinds of state things. And so our grant this year is $204,786. Part of that money also for St. Jude's put in for some enhancement, some security enhancements and so there, part of that money goes to them. And then this is the one that we all think about, this is the Educational Costary Grant, the ECS Grant. And there's a formula and it's supposed to be to equalize education in the towns, so that every town gets a little bit of this big pie and it's used to kind of equalize funding. Monroe's, part of that grant was $6,572,118. That goes directly to the town of Monroe, does not come to the school district, so the town uses it to offset the mill rate. So I know Jim has talked about it in the past and we're talking about, you know, our budget is $51 million. Some of the money of that $51 million comes from these grants that, this grant especially goes to the town. So again, total grants that we get are $8,532,688. I gave you a sheet on your, in your, at your spot that really talked a little bit about, more about the explanation of the grants and how much money we had. I wanted to share something else quickly with you. This year we've applied for some other grants. Now, Monroe historically hasn't really received a lot of grants that they apply for because we're really not in, we're not the kind of district that usually receives grants because of where we are, our wealth in the state. But we've applied for two School of Distinction Grants. Because remember, there were two schools in the district, Monroe L and Massey, who are identified as Schools of Distinction. So as, based on our CAP scores and our CMT scores, as Schools of Distinction, we were able to apply for grants and part of the money went for disseminating some of the best practices that the schools do, Monroe L and Massey. And some of it, you could use for supplies and materials. Monroe L applied for $32,000 and Massey applied for $15,000. We have not heard yet if we've gotten it or not, but we plan on using the money, again, to get a group of people, pay for their subs, to present material, present what we do at Massey and what we do at Monroe Elementary to the state and also use for technology in the schools. Again, we're trying to make sure every student has a computer. And the other grant that we applied for, Sheila just applied for this, is the Connecticut Core Standards Mini Grant, we've applied for $2,000. Again, it's to help, more instructional materials to help implement PAMACor into our district and we're, you know, we've been moving forward with that anyway, so we think we have a good shot at that. So, those are the grants and that's the PD for this month. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, a question about the IDEA Grant. Part of it goes to St. Jude's?
Part of it goes, we have to pay for special ed support for students in St. Jude's. So it might be a speech and language, part of a speech and language pathologist that works at St. Jude's or instructional materials, things like that.
So one of our speech pathologists would go to St. Jude's, write services?
Yes.
Okay.
I might add that these grants take intensive management by the staff, especially the title grants, they're very complicated grants to apply for and to manage the funds. And so support staff and district office oftentimes is spending a fair amount of time managing those grants. But we do pretty well with the grants, I think, for the fact that we're deserved to have over $8 million in grant money coming in, I think is significant.
And there are other grants that we've applied for, again, that we just don't qualify for because of our socioeconomic status. And I know that we looked, Gabby and Kay looked at other grants that we could apply for and when you looked at the amount of work and the small amount of money that comes back and the work that we had to do for that, it was decided that really wasn't good for us.
Thank you, John, are you doing student assessment as well?
I am.
Wow. Great. How are yours?
We do this every year, you'll see the booklet that we, that we present every year. I have to say that this year I'm going to, I'm not gonna bore you with reading the numbers in the book, so I'm gonna leave that for you. On the slides that are, on the presentation, it'll point you to different pages in the book, but I'm not necessarily gonna go from page, page to page and you're welcome for that. The other thing is, we did go to that workshop about Finnish lessons and one of the things that he said, first thing, is that America has a preoccupation with test scores and competition and what rank they are. And in Finland, they don't have that, they don't worry about it, they just do what's best for kids. So with that in mind, I'm still gonna talk a little bit about our test scores and we'll throw it away. I'm gonna start with our college destination because this is, this is really the end result, where our kids end up going. Class of 2004, and by the way, Joe Cobbs is here, that he can answer any questions about some of this stuff. Sheila's here, Jack and other, Jack and Kevin, there's a lot of instruction leaders here. If you have any questions, we can certainly all chime in and I hope that they do. But, class of 2014, this is the breakdown of two and four-year schools that our kids go to, 88% of our kids, or 265 out of 298, attended two- to four-year school. And that's, that's a great number. You'll see it's a little bit down from previous years, but we're all in the same ballpark. Not only do our kids go to the schools, but we had 50 acceptances in the most competitive schools, which is the highest ranking in bar, and 186 in the highly competitive schools. Again, our kids are doing well, getting into good schools. But I thought, well, maybe they need to know, what are some of the most competitive schools that our students get into and what are some of the highly competitive schools? And you'll see that that's what this slide tells you. You know, we're talking about most competitive schools, students this year got into Boston College, Carnegie Mellon, Georgetown, Colgate, Lehigh, Johns Hopkins. And then on the highly competitive school, the next tier down, you'll see UConn, Quinnipiac, different, different schools there that you can see, but I just wanted to give you some examples of the schools. One of the things that we looked at this year, we looked at different kinds of data. We just didn't- We just didn't look at the everyday data that we've been looking at for 100 years. We looked at different kinds of things. And this is one of the things that we looked at. What are the most applied schools that our kids apply to in Massey? We looked at those. 53 of our 200 and, what did I say, 298 students applied to UConn, 53. And then you can see the next one, 53 applied to Southern, University of Massachusetts, University of Rhode Island, Quinnipiac, 28 applied, all the way down to University of Delaware and University of Vermont. Two of those schools are on the highly competitive or competitive. We had a lot of students in our district apply to those schools. So, I thought that was, we thought that was an interesting kind of thing. Now, let's talk about test scores. As you know, this year, the only scores that we can report on for the CAPT and CMT are the science scores. So, these are our science scores. For fifth grade, 96.8% of our kids scored proficiency in science and 88 scored goal. And then you can see in eighth grade, 91 were proficient, 81 were at goal. And in 10th grade, 96 or 97% were at proficient and 80% were at goal. And this is the science CAPT scores. And this is our DRG comparison. Again, we really want to look at how well we do. We want to continue to do better than ourselves, but if we want to look at comparisons, let's look at some comparisons. And this is, these are our, our students in our DRG, where we are. If you remember, a few years ago, we had that high CAPT science year and then the next year, we were at the bottom, but we've been consistently back at the top. And again, it's, it's, these aren't the same kind of, these aren't the same kids, these are different kids, so our numbers fluctuate. We did get an overall, a school performance index or an SPI this year. And you can see the goal from the state of Connecticut is in seven years or eight years, every school system will have to be 88% at goal. I mean, you can see where we are, all nine, over 90s. Jack Hall's 89.8, close enough to 90. You can see where we are with our school performance index. No wonder we got Schools of Distinction and the School of Excelling with our CAPT scores. So, that's a positive thing. And all those scores are on page 10 and 12 in your book and you can see them and if you'd like to digest them. But, improvement strategies. Well, you may or may not know this, I think you do know this, that in another two years, possibly three years, the next generation science standards are going to become part of the Connecticut standards. And so, next generation science standards, which are, which we believe are great standards because they do things like they ask big questions of kids. Again, not just memorizing things, but big questions. What role does energy play in the world? How organism structured to ensure survival? Those are the kind of things, the big questions that are going to come out of the next generation science standards. A lot of hands-on science inquiry. What are we, what's the big word here? Inquiry? We're, we're training our staff on that. That's what's happening in our district right now. And the K5 coordinator, Roseanne Haughton, and Jim Stauszel, 612, are making sure that every unit of study has these inquiry lessons and these hands-on lessons in science. Use of benchmark assessment for data analysis. We're looking and see how well our kids perform on these assessments. So, we have to see what we can do next to help them perform better. Again, not the regurgitation stuff, but really understanding what's happening and using that information. And what do we want them to do? We want them to obtain, evaluate, and communicate information. Just like, you know, you guys want me to do and Jim to do and, and we want the principals to do and the teachers to do. That's the kind of real-world stuff that's happening in the science, next generation science standards. So, we're really working hard to improve that, too. SAT Day. You'll, you'll find that on page 13. Now, if you'll, you'll see that our scores from 13 to 14 has gone up in the reading, 513 to 519, and math from 522 to 525, and writing from 521 went down a little bit, 517. 86% of our kids took the test this year lower than it has in the past. We're well above the state average of 507, 510, and 508. This year, the state did something that we never saw before. They published public school data. Never did that before. So, this, obviously, this top score is public and private school, but this is the public school data, 499, 500, and 500. So, we're well above the state average. But we're not happy being above the state average. You know that. You know, we always look at our DRG and we're not happy. We, we didn't, we're, we're at the bottom of our DRG. And so, that's something that doesn't make us happy and something that we're working on and we're going to kind of talk about that. But again, we just didn't look at the data like we always looked at, we kind of dove deeper. And I can't tell you how much time Joe Cobbs and I have spent looking on the cell spreadsheets, looking at this. If we look at the state, there's 195 schools reported. We're 59th in reading out of the 195, 49th in math, and 62 in writing. Which, what we did is, we looked at the top 75% of our kids. Now, I know, because I would, I said the same thing when we started talking about this. Well, everybody else can look at the top 75%. And that's true, they can. But we want to look at our kids, we want to look at what we're doing for us. And these are the scores for the top 75% of our kids. So, our top kids are performing really well. Now, we got to make sure all of our kids perform really well. That's what we want to make sure happens. We did some further investigation and I want to just talk to you a little bit about this. Originally, the name of this slide was Massey's Traditions and many of my colleagues didn't think that was a good, good name for this. So, we changed it. So, SAT test frequency. What we discovered is that for some reason, Massey's students take these SATs in junior years, junior year, and then they're done. They don't take them again. And when we talked to other schools, a lot of other schools, their kids take it the first time in senior year. Our kids seem to take it in junior year, they may take it more than once, but they're happy with their scores and they don't take it again in the senior year. And you know and I know, the more they take it, especially now that they're matured another year or another six months, they tend to do better. So, that's a tradition that we're going to try to break. The next tradition, or the next thing we looked at is this early dismissal data. You know, Joe stood up here a couple of weeks ago and said, you know, we really, our kids want to, they feel like it's their right to leave early in senior year, that they don't need to stay a whole day and how are we going to help kids stay longer? We looked at the kids who had, who left early senior year. And those kids performed not as well as those kids who stayed one or two or three classes more. Is there a correlation? We don't know. Is it, are those disenfranchised kids and that's why they're not doing well? We don't know either. But it's something that we're really going to keep investigating and look at because it's data that we have to look at and figure out what's going on. Now, I just threw this in because this happened to come out right when I was putting this together. There was a survey, this Phi Delta Kappa and a Gallup did a survey of Americans on whether standardized tests are helpful. And 68% of Americans said standardized tests were helpful. And down here, the American support of the SAT or SAT, only 31 said they were very supportive. And then you can see somewhat supportive, not, not very supportive in that, supportive of all. I don't know if this has a diff, I don't know if this means anything. I don't know if our kids are listening or feeling the same kind of thing and they're not putting the effort in, but I wanted to share that with you because it looked good on this slide. But what are we going to do to improve SATs? That's what we want to find out. So, first thing that we, we did, and Joe has done this, is he implemented a statewide PSATs for all sophomores. And Joe, this is the what year that we did this?
Fourth.
Fourth year of doing this? So, a system-wide PSATs that we pay for all our kids to do. This year, Joe is, is planning on doing a PSAT Scores Back Night. And if you know anything about the PSATs, they get this Use of Sumaries, Answers, and Skills for each of the questions on the PSATs. It, it shows you what, how you scored and why it's right or wrong and analyzes why it's right or wrong. In the past, we've handed it to the students so we've hoped that the students and their parents look at it. This year, there's a, a PSAT Scores Back Night that Joe is working on with the parents, coming in to look at the scores, kind of going over it with parents. Again, telling parents and students, this is important, let's look at it. And this year, Massey will co-host with the PTO, a SAT prep course with a group called Catalyst Prep, so that they can, you know, help students understand some of the test-taking scores. And I can tell you from personal experience, where I had a son who needed to do this, they talk a lot about how to take the test, which improved his scores immensely, just the fact of how to take the test as opposed to, you know, you got to study this, you got to study that. So, it's something that's really helpful. But, we're a little, we don't want to spend too much energy because in 2016, we have a whole new redesigned SATs. So, 2000, the class, in 2016, that class will take a different SATs. Remember how it used to have analogies, then it got rid of analogies? Now you have vocabulary, well, they, just isolated vocabulary? I'm going to go over the eight key changes in the SATs. The first one is problems ground in a real-world context. So, what I read, what the SATs are saying is, look, we want our kids to be college and career ready. And the only way for them to be college and career ready is if they start working with things that are real-world. So, this one is, it's evidence-based reading and it's, it's demonstrate their, their ability to read fiction and nonfiction and to gather information from that. So, that's one of the changes. Relevant words and contexts. No more will it have four words and you have to pick the definition. You'll have a passage, there'll be a word in the passage, and you'll have context clues to find out what the definition is. Much more real-world than a word on the board. Command of evidence. Again, they're going to read passages, they're going to look at charts and graphs and look at evidence and answer questions based on this evidence that they see in front of them. And it's, again, ability to interpret and to synthesize. Exactly what we're talking about in Common Core, exactly what we're talking about with the next generation science standard, and now the SATs are going there, too. Focus on math that matters most, and this is problem solving, data analysis, algebraic thinking. That's the math that's going to be on this new SAT. If you remember, no, you used to get a, you used to get a point off for a wrong answer. Should I answer it? Well, if you can get, if you can isolate two, two answers, maybe you shouldn't do it, maybe. Now, no penalty for wrong answers, you only get a score for right answers. Founding documents and great goal conversations. I thought this was interesting. They're going to use primary sources in our, in our history. The Bill of Rights, Declaration of Independence, kids are going to read that information and they're going to kind of have conversations or write conversations about the documents that they're looking at and to make some, some, they're going to look at, make some, use that evidence to make some ideas about the documents. I thought that was interesting. Science, analysis of science and, and, and history and social studies. Again, primary sources, nonfiction reading, what we're trying to do with the CAP, read some, read a passage, answer questions based on that. And then, again, the essay that they write is going to be different than the essays that they write now. They're going to have to read, read sources and come up with a coherent argument based on the sources that they write. So, SATs are going to change and we're going to have to kind of get with that. We don't know exactly what that's going to look like, but we will know in 2016. Okay, advanced placement. I love saying this. In 2006 and 2007, Massey had no AP courses. And now, these are the AP courses that are at Massey High School. And if you look, if you look on page in your book, on page 15, you will see the individual scores of these, of these AP tests. But I wanted to show you this. There were 413 exams taken this year. There were 356 of the exams had three or better. And remember, for AP, in order for them to really count for colleges and what colleges want to see, they want to see scores that are three, four, or five. Of the 413, 356 had three or better. And then, there were 280 students who took the AP exams this year. And if you look in, on page 15, you'll see how well our kids scored in each of the specific areas. I mean, Calculus AB and BC, 32 out of 32 scored a three, four, or five. Did you take that?
Yeah, yeah. This is from that was very approach.
Oh, she should have.
It's very well played, man.
I mean, it was, it was amazing. That, and you look, you look at all of that, they're all in the 90s and 100% of our students taking these APs, AP tests and getting three, fours, or five.
I think that class is all fours and fives, too, no threes.
No threes at all. That's, I mean, that's unbelievable. And then the chart below talks a little bit about AP tests that our kids take that we don't have a class for. They might work with a teacher individually, like there's microeconomics or macroeconomics, they might work with a teacher individually and do some reading and then they take these tests. But, that's a score, a number we should be proud of, the number of kids. And the other thing I wanted to tell you is that 25% of the sophomores take an AP class. And 22% of the juniors and 24% of the seniors. And that's a lot. We never had sophomores taken before. So, our kids are taking these tests earlier and they're doing better. But what are we going to do to help? We're going to, our, our AP teachers are continually taking professional development with the College Board to help instructional strategies. The College Board, the gentleman that's on the College Board calls Joe all the time, talking about how he can help, what does he need to do to help? That's something that we do and our teachers, our AP teachers take such ownership in that. They're really, they're really excited about that. There's a part of the PSATs that are, that's called AP Potential. So, the kids who take the PSATs will get a report that tell them, you know what, you would do well in AP Calculus in two years, or you would do well in AP US History. So, that AP Potential Report, our guidance counselors work with our kids on that all the time. And the last thing I really wanted to share with you as far as scores are concerned is our ACTs. Now, you can see, we don't have a lot of students who take the ACTs. And the ACTs are a different kind of test than the SAT, although that may change when the SAT changes in 2016. This is more a, an academic test as opposed to an ability test. This is more of an achievement test. And you can see we only had 121 students take that. We think, though, that number's going to go up because for the first time, Massey provided students with the pre-ACT tests for sophomores, Joe?
Sophomores and juniors.
Sophomores and juniors. So, we think that number will go up. And sometimes, kids perform better on ACTs than they do in SATs. Again, in 2016, we're not sure where that's going to, where that correlation's going to be, but right now, that's where we are with that. And you can see on that page, on page 16, what our scores are in that. And again, we're above the state average, but nothing to scream about. Then, on page 19 to 21, all the secondary instructional leaders and all the administrators sat down and looked at the data. They came up with a, a little narrative analysis of the data and then some improvement strategies, most of which I talked about today already, but you can see that at the end of the book. And that's it. So, any questions about our, our data?
Aren't most of the ACT tests taken for schools, required for schools outside the Northeast?
That used to be the case. That used to be the case, it was all Midwest schools. Now, many of even the Northeast schools will accept either ACTs or SATs. And that's something that's just happened in the last maybe three or four years, but that used to be the case, yeah.
What type of correlation does the ACT have with the SAT?
There's no correlation at all.
So, there's never been any study stuff?
There not, because they're different tests. One is an aptitude, one is an achievement test. So, they're different, there has been no correlation that we found. As a matter of fact, what, anecdotally, anecdotally, what we see is that students sometimes who don't perform well on the SAT, perform better on the ACT because it is more an achievement test and, and the classes that they take help them with that.
That's Allie and I.
That's you, guys?
I'm actually not even taking the SATs. I already took my ACTs and I'm not even taking the SATs.
But you're the reason why our scores have a problem.
Well, I, I know, maybe it's just my own personal experience with my own kids, but it seems like they took the SAT multiple, multiple times. And if the reason, one of the reasons our scores are down so low is because they're taking them in the junior versus the senior year. I wonder if there's a way we can, we can influence that by, I mean, each of the schools that these kids got into, maybe they could get into the ones that they really wanted to get into if they would have increased their SAT scores. So, I don't know, do we, do we publish the average score that it takes to get into these schools?
Absolutely. Aviance has that. And, and what we're finding are the kids are saying, oh, that score will get me into that school and that's the school I want to get into, there's no need for me to take it another time. And that's what we're finding.
The other big push against it is the, the early action deadlines now have moved way up, whereas a lot of colleges are now looking at October 1st deadlines for early action. up, whereas a lot of colleges are now looking at October 1st deadlines for early action. So the last one that the kids will use will be the junior year because they take it right away. I think there's a September administration, but besides that, we just offered it in Massey November 12th. So November 12th is, you know, a month and a half late for kids that had to apply early action. So the colleges have pushed up the deadlines a little bit and that's kind of tightened up a little bit. But the message that we're trying to give to kids and to the colleges we're trying to give to the kids is just that, that generally we've seen over time, you know, if you take them again, your senior year, you know, three or four more months of, you know, education and they're going to tend to do better. But we want our kids to take, like Galler was saying, we want them to get this test that they feel most comfortable with, that they can do the best job with.
And again, it's not about the scores for Monroe, it's about her scores so she can get in the best school that she can get into.
What do we see on the PSATs? I didn't see that going here. Do we see a large percentage of the kids taking the PSATs?
Well, they all take them because it's offered schoolwide. So October 15th this year, we had all sophomores and all juniors take their PSATs. We kind of put all the sophomores in the gym, all the juniors were in the science hall, and so they all took them. The important piece that John spoke of before is the nice thing, the PSAT is very diagnostic as opposed to the SAT where generally you get a number. I got a 520 on math, I got a 510 on verbal. The PSATs, and this is why I want to do that scores back night because I want parents to understand this, that gives you specific strand analysis to, when I look at my math score and I've got, and I got a 48, because they just, if you just add a zero on the PSATs, that's how they do their, that's how they figure their scores. So if you got a 48, it tells you specifically that, you know, in linear equations, I got all the questions right. When it came to data analysis and proportions, I didn't get any of those questions right. So, you know, the key is to then use that diagnostic information to inform your studying habits for the SAT.
I think that's a great idea, the scores back.
Whatever logic we use or the students at Massey use for what school they're striving to get into, I mean, I would think that all these other schools are probably using the same logic, right? And they're constricted to the same test dates. Yet we're at the bottom and Avon and Daniel and Sims, Perry and Greenwich are at the top. And I imagine that there's a huge difference between what schools you can get into if you're, you know, well over 1,500 or if you're, you know, well below 1,500.
And I think that's why we looked at the top 75%.
I'm sorry?
That's why we looked at the top 75% performers at Massey. And if you look at that page, it shows the top 75%. Those scores will get you into those top schools. So when we're looking at that, that means the bottom 25% of our students aren't performing as well, nearly as well as we want them to perform. So this is, this is something that's important to us. So we want all students to perform well who want to take this test and go on. But I think what you're saying is the top 75% are getting those scores to get them into, you know, the, we had the 50 acceptances to the highly competitive schools. It's the other students we have to really help take it multiple times, take it in their senior year to help them, their scores to improve.
And I appreciate what you're saying, but wouldn't these other schools be in the exact same boat?
Yeah, yes. I mean, that's what I said. Yeah, they're exactly the same.
Is there a same thing, you know, 75 and 25%?
Traditionally, we tend to have more kids take the SATs than a lot of other, a lot of other schools. That's the one thing that's not apples to apples. Not every kid has taken it at all schools. But it's hard data to glean. The college board doesn't give us that. And in the past, I've actually done some of that, you know, basically, I know how many test takers, you know, in other school in our area had. And so I got to call like the guys, say, hey, how many kids? Because if they give you last year's score, so the scores that you're seeing from the class of 2014. So I would call these other schools and say, how many kids graduated last year? So now I know that they had 276 take the test, but they graduated 350 kids, so 75 kids didn't take the test. So that's another piece of it too. So it's not completely always apples to apples.
You might have heard the governor talking too about the possibility of supplanting the SBACK, 11th grade test, with the SAT, with the new SAT in 2016, which would make it mandatory for all kids in every high school to take the SAT. I'm not sure where I am on that logic at this point in time, but I foresee some real problems with having all students take the SAT. It's not something that all students sometimes are capable of performing on.
And again, we want to look at our students and, you know, we want to keep creeping or actually moving those scores up further, higher and higher. This year they went up a little bit. We want to continue that. What is 2016 going to bring to us? We think the new SATs are going to look a lot like the captain CMT. Because if you looked at those eight changes, that's a lot like the captain CMT. And what we saw is that Massey High School was a school of distinction based on their last year's, their cap scores. So will that mean our students do better? That could possibly be. So we have, we have a little bit of a wait and see for a lot of these things, but we're not just sitting back, you know, Joe's doing the parent workshops and the student workshops.
What does the SAT correlate with? I mean, have you looked at those studies?
You mean how well a student performs in college?
No, I just, like, the SAT, does that have a strong correlation with word knowledge, funding knowledge?
I haven't seen that data.
Inductive reasoning. I mean, what is the, there has to be some studies on that.
I have to look at that because I haven't seen that. We know that there are some factors in the town that affect, a factor of the kind of students that you have that affects how well a student does in their SATs. And one of the things that we've heard time and time again is the mother, the higher the mother's education, the better a student does on SATs. That's one thing that's been published everywhere. But not much we can do about that.
There's got to be other correlations.
Yeah, we have to look at that. I can do some of that research.
Thanks a lot, John. Good information. Okay, we will move on to item 11, new business. I would need a motion for a application for special exemption from Massey High School.
I'd like to make a motion that we have Jim start the procedures of looking at the special exception permit here at Massey High School for our field and move forth with planning and zoning and get that updated since the last time it was 1997 and there needs to be some changes to this.
Second.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second to start the process for revising our special exemptions for Massey High School. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Onto item B, request for proposal for Massey turf field. I need a motion.
I'd like to make the motion that we authorize the superintendent to engage a company for looking at the Massey turf field for Phase 1 feasibility study.
I have a motion.
In Phase 2.
Oh, I'm sorry, in Phase 2.
Both phases, yeah.
Sorry. Both phases, both Phase 1 for feasibility study and also Phase 2 for the detailed work and bid specifications.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Item C, formation of a building committee. Can you give us some information?
Sure. Gabby and Jack attended a facilities meeting, what was it, two weeks ago or so, you know, about rules and regulations and building projects, et cetera. And this, the turf field, in order to go forward, that would require a building committee to oversee that work. So we would like your permission to go forward and start forming that committee. It would have to be a couple of board members, a couple of people from town hall, a couple of community members, et cetera.
I'd like to make a motion that we form a building committee for the turf field project.
I have a motion of a second. Jeff, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Policies, first review. George?
Two built policies on the agenda for first review tonight. Policy 5141.3, speaking to health assessments, just clearing up the language in the first change. The requirement, the state requirement is that the health assessment is completed prior to start of 7th grade and start of 11th grade. So we're just changing that to make it more clear. And then we utilize the Trumbull Monroe Board Health to refer for three health assessments. So that's the little change in that policy document. Policy 6146, this elevates the total number of credits required for graduation and brings us in line with our vote at the last meeting and also gets us closer to what we anticipate to be the state requirement in the coming years. So it takes us to 22 and a half. And to that, we're adding a math and an elective. For first review.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, George. We'll move on to item E. And this, we're also anticipating a vote on this. So if I could get a motion on non-certified early retirement incentive?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the superintendent to offer a early retirement incentive for all non-certified staff.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Thank you, Amy. Discussion?
The, it's, at this time, it is not for all of the staff. We've only spoken to the association or the secretaries. But I would like to, the ability to consider it for other groups that may, that may afford us some savings in our budget. So I just want to clarify that motion.
So motion's good as it was presented. It's just that you're going after specific.
I think in the motion though, Diane, could you read back? I think it said all.
Yes, all.
So I would like to just to be, offer the incentive to some of the certified, non-certified groups. I think we would need a motion to amend the motion in that case.
Would.
Yep, I'd like to amend my, the motion to authorize the superintendent to offer the incentive to some non-certified staff.
A second?
Yes.
Any discussion on the amended motion?
Is this for finalization of this budget and when would the deadline for them to let you know be?
By December 15th. So it would be in time. I mean, our first blush at the budget may not include them, but it may as well because people, some people have expressed some interest. So, but it's certainly, we would know all of that detail by the January, what's our date, January 5th, I think is our deadline for, for the board to adopt the budget.
Well, legally you have to adopt it by the 9th, but your board meeting is on the 5th, so she'd like a special meeting at the 5th.
Okay, I have amended motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the amended motion? Thank you. And any discussion on the first motion? And we have to vote on the first motion, right? All in favor of, do we?
Yep.
All right, all in favor of the first motion? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion passes anyway on some non-certifiers. Moving on to F, textbook approval. Alan?
Yeah, we have a couple textbooks. Both of them are AP Yukon credits. We have AP Calculus and French Yukon AP. We have the Calculus book for your reading enjoyment if you want to check it out. Single Verbal Calculus.
Just leave it there.
I'm on it.
French, French textbook isn't out yet, but for some reason they gave me a Spanish book if anyone wants a Spanish book.
Aren't they neighbors?
Alec, could you read us passages from it?
In Spanish, you want me to?
Donde está la biblioteca?
I can tell you that both, both of these textbooks, both of the courses are fairly prescriptive in order for kids to pass these AP courses. So I know that our instructional leaders have done their due diligence, but they're here to answer any questions that you might have of them.
Any questions?
Are you happy with them?
I, you saw the AP score before.
Okay.
They're outstanding.
That's all I need there.
I don't know, this looks way too easy to me.
And the French book is not, they don't have an edition available at this point, but we do use the Spanish book from the same publisher, so the same format, et cetera, as promised.
It's the same format. That's why you have the Spanish instead of the French. It's going to be the exact same thing.
Just in French.
Exactly. So this, this calculus book, this is the Yukon book that, you know, is the university level textbook?
Yes.
And it's, is it just being upgraded to a new edition or?
What happens is you need to have an approved book on the Yukon list. And the present book we have came off the list once a new edition came out.
I see.
And we had four years to replace it. This is year four.
Gotcha.
The problem is, that book there, I think it's the seventh edition, they just came out with the eighth edition. So that one there is now on the clock. So we actually want to get the eighth edition, which again is just some update to that, but not much of a change.
Okay.
But then it gives us an opportunity to use it for more years.
So Mike, have you gone through this book?
I don't know if it's that one, but I had, I took the AV last year.
To get the previous edition.
Yeah.
That's the new edition to the book you guys use for the, for AV.
So if we pulled any problematic, it is wrote on the board to be able to answer correctly?
I hope so.
Any else, Alan?
Sir?
Any further questions on the books?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we will move on to G.
In item G, I placed on your, at your place, a copy of Article 12, Section 4 of the teacher's contract where individual hardship is specified and the opportunity for the board to provide additional sick time for a teacher that, you know, has an unusual circumstance. I can tell you that we have a teacher with an unusual circumstance that will exhaust sick leave time three weeks prior to being allowed to come back to work. And so I'm asking the board to allow me to invoke the hardship clause of the teacher's contract. Otherwise, she would be unpaid for the remainder of her hospital stay.
Please?
I'd like to authorize the superintendent to invoke the individual hardship clause, Article 12, Section 4 of the teacher's contract.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I'd like to say something. I think it's very important for us to recognize the fact that, you know, our teachers work very hard for our Board of Ed and we want to make sure that they all understand that we're here for them as well. It's not just come in, teach our kids, and leave. I mean, this is a very important thing that we're doing tonight. And I appreciate Jim taking the time to make the copies for us, to read it, to understand it, and really look into this. So I think it's a great idea and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we got halfway through that vote. All in favor? And motion passes. Thank you. Onto 12.
Good night.
I need a motion.
I can listen to you, John.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? And return.
Nice meeting everyone. Thank you. Nice meeting, everyone, thank you.
Technology is used in our everyday lives to make things easier and more efficient. We are happy to have it be used in our education.
We like technology because it makes learning fun.
Technology re-science the life.
Technology helps us make things better.
Google Earth is awesome.
Google Mine is awesome too.
I love that one of my teacher gave me the opportunity to do my homework on the day.
No running game, lots of fun.
Technology awesome.
Technology.
Technology is used in our everyday lives to make things easier and more efficient. We are happy to have it be used in our education.
We like technology because it makes learning fun.
Google Earth is awesome.
Google Mine is awesome too.
I love that one of my teacher gave me the opportunity to do my homework on the day.
No running game, lots of fun.
Technology.
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 Technology helps us make things better.
We like technology because it makes learning fun.
There's no learning game without the fun.
Technology re-science the life.
Technology helps us make things better.
Google Earth is awesome.
Google Money is awesome too.
I love it when my teacher gives me the opportunity to do my homework on the head of the day.
There's no learning game without the fun.
Technology awesome.